Recording in progress.
All right, welcome to this regular meeting of the Planning Commission this Tuesday evening, May 23rd. I now call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mary, would you please call roll?
Chair Williams.
Present.
Vice Chair Abner Nutter.
Present.
Commissioner Nugent.
Present.
Commissioner Patel.
Present.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Present.
Thank you. All right, good evening and welcome. We are happy to be here in person with options for virtual participation. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. And if participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you'll be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute yourself. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. All right, so next on the agenda, or first on the agenda, is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item that is not appearing on the agenda may address the Planning Commission at this time. State law prevents the commission from taking action on any matter that's not on the agenda, but your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to the commission's discretion and can be extended if the commission wishes to do so. So at this time, I want to see if we have any public speakers, any members of the public.
We do have one in-person public speaker. How long would you like to give them?
Three minutes is fine. Is that the only, we don't have anyone in person?
Only one in person, yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And that's it.
Great, all right, yeah, up to three minutes is fine.
Okay, Richie, you can come on up to the podium.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. My name is Richie Cruz. I'm a representative for Carpenters Local Union 217. And tonight, I just want to voice that local hire apprenticeship and medical and retirement benefits are labor standards that should be presented to the working class. Construction workers deserve to earn this fair wage with said benefits to allow them and their families a chance to thrive and prosper. Over 50% of all construction workers are on some type of financial aid. That goes in hand with having to finance between four and five-hour commute daily in order to provide. Local opportunities for hire gives our construction workers an opportunity to reinvest back into their economic community as they spend their earnings with their tax dollars being used for local schools, governments, and helping fund in their economic, any way that they possibly can. And another labor standard that should be held in high regard is a commitment to an apprenticeship program. This ensures that we continue to have a workforce that's able to complete high-quality projects in a safe and timely manner. It also provides an opportunity for a career path, not just a job, but career path for all men and women who have or will go through our apprenticeship program. And the final part on that apprenticeship is that it ensures that we continue to evolve with the ever-changing conditions of construction, as we all, I'm sure, know about. And construction workers look forward to more than just these labor standards being honored. They're excited to have a chance to revitalize their community, to be able to drive down the street and say, you know, I built that, and to continue to have these opportunities presented to them. I just want to say thank you so much for this awesome three minutes, you know, it's fantastic. We've got it done really fast, and I hope you guys have a pleasant evening.
All right, thank you for your comments. Okay, if there are no further public comments at this time, I will close the open public comment period.
There are none.
Okay, great. So at this time, we will go to the public hearing, and item number one. Can you read that, please?
Item number one is continued item from May 9th, 2023, Planning Commission meeting, appeal of zoning administrator decision to approve a second-story addition to an existing single-family residence at 329 Greenfield Avenue, PA 2022-051.
All right, so we will start with a staff presentation on this, followed by the appellant presentation and the applicant presentation, and then clarifying questions from the commission, and then an opportunity for public comments. The appellant and the applicant will be given up to 15 minutes each to present, and members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak, depending on the number of speakers that we have. The applicant may also be given five minutes at the end to respond to the public comments. Once the public hearing is closed, then the commission can deliberate and render a decision on the project. Finally, if a decision is made tonight, the decision of the Planning Commission on this project can be appealed to the city council within 10 calendar days. So at that time, I mean, at this time, we can go ahead and start with the staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair Williams. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and the public. My name is Kenneth Cho, Assistant Planner, presenting on agenda item one, appeal of a second-story addition at 329 Greenfield Avenue. To provide some project background, the Neighborhood Informational Meeting was held on May 28th, 2022, where the appellant, Dennis Lee, raised privacy concerns. Following the meeting, the formal application was submitted on July 21st, 2022. After three review cycles, the project was deemed complete and duly noticed from February 17th through February 27th of 2023. On March 2nd, 2023, the zoning administrator approved the project. This decision was appealed to the Planning Commission on March 11th by Dennis Lee, the appellant. On May 9th, the Planning Commission agreed to continue the item due to request by the appellant, which brings us here to the May 23rd meeting. The project site is located at 329 Greenfield Avenue and consists of one parcel located in the Sugarloaf neighborhood of San Mateo. This block of Greenfield Avenue is between 42nd Avenue and La Casa Avenue. This aerial view shows the existing residence, which is one-story and 1,640 square feet in size. Protected trees on site include 1 54-inch Coast Live oak in the rear yard. The general plans land use designation of this site is single-family, which is consistent with the zoning R1C. The project description consists of a two-story addition to an existing one-story single-family residence. As proposed, the project requires a single-family dwelling design review, or SFDDR, for the second-story addition. The new second-story addition is approximately 566 square feet. The project also includes a 344-square-feet one-story addition to the front of the residence. The project is subject to the city's general plan policies, code, and design guidelines. The zoning code provides a list of development standards, which are summarized in this table, and include floor area ratio, building height, and setbacks. Staff would like to note that the existing residence has two legal non-conforming setbacks at the front and rear of the residence. No changes are proposed for the portion of the residence having the legal non-conforming setback, and all proposed additions conform with the setback requirements. Overall, staff has evaluated the project and finds that it meets all applicable standards in the general plan and zoning code. For public comments, three comments were made during the Neighborhood Informational Meeting for privacy caused by the second-story rear windows, loss of sunlight from the second-story addition, and the tree removal. Staff received one comment during the initial project review and public notice period focused on privacy concern. In response, the applicant had added frosting windows and privacy hedges. Next, staff will provide an overview of the reasons for the appeal. The appellant raised concerns regarding consistency with the single-family dwelling design guidelines for its impact to privacy. The project proposes a total of five second-story rear-facing windows. Staff evaluated the design of these windows and found that they are consistent with the design guideline regarding window proportion and rhythm. The project meets the required second-story setback of 25 feet from the rear property line, which reduces the building mass and privacy impacts, as shown on this elevation. In accordance with the design guideline, staff acknowledges that privacy impacts are greater when close and reduce with distance. As shown here on the plans, while the proposed windows appear approximately aligned with the appellant's rear windows, the proposed windows are located more than 50 feet apart. In addition, the applicant has voluntarily agreed to provide frosting for all of the five second-story rear windows and provide planting of privacy hedges along the rear property lines. Overall, staff finds that the project is in substantial conformance with the design guideline. The second reason of appeal is the frosting window treatment for the stairway landing window. The appellant requested for correction in the zoning decision letter dated March 2nd, 2023. The letter noted in error that the stairway landing window would not be frosted. This has been revised in the resolution, given that the project plans, as shown above, noted frosting treatment for all five second-story rear windows, including the stairway landing window. A condition of approval requiring that construction of the project, if approved, to substantially conform with the approved plans, has also been added. For environmental review, the project is categorically exempt under Class 1, Section 15301E, since it's a small addition to an existing structure. Given that the project meets all applicable policies and regulations, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to deny the appeal and uphold the zoning administrator decision to approve the single-family dwelling design review. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll move on to the appellant presentation. Do we have someone here for that? Great, come on up. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name... My name's Dennis Lee. This is my wife, Irene. First of all, we want to thank you for hearing our case and giving us the opportunity to appeal. We're sorry about my medical situation about two weeks ago. That caused any inconvenience. About our appeal, the main ground is that the privacy of a home due to the second-story addition to the property at 329 Greenfield Avenue. Our home is located directly behind the property in question with adjoining back fence. The five proposed window at the rear of the second-story addition will directly overlook our entire backyard, and several of our home private living spaces, including a family room, bathroom, and two bedrooms. This five-inclusive window has serious impact on our home privacy and our life. I would like to show some slides to show what I meant here. So this is slide one, uh, slide two, I'm sorry. So let's show our backyard, the current situations. We have a pretty big backyard there. Go to slide number two, please. Okay, so on this slide, show the elevation of the rear, elevation of the project in question. Let's go to slide number four. Next slide, yes. So we, can we go, go back to the, yeah, this one, okay. So we create this slide to create visual reference on this five window to our yard. So they look pretty in the, yeah. Okay. So it's a massive block, you know, on the north side of our property, but we are fine about it, but we object, we do object. about it, but we object, we do object to its impact on privacies, because they overlook our whole yards and our private space in our home. So let's move to next slide. So this slide show the left side of our yard, including our deck areas. Let's go to the next slide. Go back. Okay. So this slide show the back, our back windows. So the proposal window can see through this window and see our bedrooms, family room, bathroom, and so, and so on and so forth. So even though the applicant later revised the plan to include frosty window and hedges, that still doesn't address our privacy concern. The frosty window only protect the owner's privacy, but not ours. When the windows are open, the sidelines overlooking our backyard and private living space still remain intrusive. The proposed hedges wouldn't address our concern either. There's no information in the plan establishing a minimum high of these hedges are initially planted, and with no provision even outline what the full ground high of these hedges expected, or how many years the hedges require to grow to the window high. These hedges are narrow triangular shapes with sharp, sharp pointing to the, at the top. They are likely to always a big gap in the uppermost portion of these hedges. They will not effectively block the sidelines from the five windows of this project. And it's difficult to see how these hedges would provide much privacy for us based on the size and the number proposed window, as well as the height of the addition story, which is far exceeds the height above the regular five-foot fence. Let's move to Slide number seven. So this is the City Design Guidelines, Section Six B. So in this section, there are five key points that are highlighted. So that include avoid privacy impact on adjacent neighbor, avoid creating sideline into adjacent homes, the second-story addition to avoid direct view into neighboring windows or yard areas, manipulating architecture form to enhance neighboring privacy, and design house addition to respect adjacent neighbors' privacies. So all those five points are listed, highlighted in that section. Let's go to Slide, next slide. So I list all those five points there, and the project, okay. So I list all those five points there from Slide, from Section Six B, and the project failed all those five points. Okay, let's move to next slide. So upon these five windows, that's how I look at it, those five window climb on the rear wall of that about twenty-two feet wide, whereas each of the two side walls of twenty-seven feet wide only have two windows. Second, it create direct sidelines into our yard window private space. Third, they do not respect our privacies, and also they are overly large, intrusive, and intimidating. We hope the planning commission look into this guidelines and enforce them to protect and preserve all parties' privacy. The third base of our appeal is the sizes of the proposed window. When presented at the neighborhood review meeting, the measurement of those proposed windows are, were smaller, with three of them two feet by two feet, one is two and a half feet by three feet, and the other is three by three feet. We expressed our privacy concern to the owner and architect at the time. We also subsequently emailed them a few times with our addition comments. We even referenced them to the City Design Guideline and related sections on neighborhood, on neighboring privacy. We feel strongly in this window will cause privacy impact for our home. However, later, the dimension of this five window all increased. This change was in direct contradiction to the privacy concern we addressed. We did our part being a good neighbors to provide feedback, but our effort seems be ignored. The fact that they increased the size after we engaged with the owner and architect show a kind of lack of goodwill. All of this caused us to question the intention of this privacy invading window. Does the proposed bathroom and hallway really need that many large window? Let's go to next slide. There are many architecture form and solution available to the applicants to enhance neighboring privacy, such as use venting skyline that can open and close, and they can get both the air and light and wouldn't impact other, other people's privacy. Second, move some of the window at the rear window to the side wall. The window at the rear wall to the side wall. The current plan of the second-story addition has two window on each side, on each side wall, but five window on the rear wall that overlooking our backyard and home, uh, private living space. Third, raising the window still high to avoid, to, to above eye level, just as many bathroom window do. Fourth, the frost window could still work if having them as fixed window or picture window that do not open. The fifth one is a combination of all above. As the project owner stated in one of the email exchange, the five window for the bathroom and the stairway are merely there to bring light into the house. All above suggestions satisfy that statement not only bring in light, but also air too. Based on the option above, there are many choices to accomplish this design preference for the project owner extension instead of invading neighbors' privacy. Let's go to Slide ten. Yeah, next slide, please. So I would like to revisit this slide. So that is the visual reference of when the five window to our yard. We want to make, I want to make four point as my closing statement here. First, despite the fact that the second-story addition of the project in question will likely create a massive block of property north side, we are fine with our neighbors' property improvement. However, we do object to the negative privacy impacts the current design proposal has on neighboring privacy, on quality of life, peace of mind, and potential property value. The proposed, the proposal frosty window and hedges to minimize privacy impact are wholly insufficient based on the fact that this window can still be open and hedges offer no assurance of sufficient obscurations. Alternatively, we have proposed multiple viable option for the project owner to still fulfill their design objectives of getting lights for their addition. Why all the proposed compromises in the spirit of City Design Guideline on neighboring privacy outline in Section Six B, we would hope the private commission can enforce this guideline and protect and restore neighboring privacy, so all neighbors can live peacefully and in harmony. Last one, we also want to appeal to...
Just to wrap it up now, because we have a few seconds left.
I'm sorry?
You only have a few seconds left.
Okay. We also want to appeal to applicant and the owner to reconsider their project design. You know, we are neighbors after all, and neighbors should respect each other's privacy. Our legal counsel have suggested that the privacy issue could be a legal matter.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I appreciate it. Okay, at this, thank you. At this time, we'll move on to the applicant presentation.
Hi, I'm Jessica Sin, and I'm the architect of the proposed second-story addition at 329 Greenfield Avenue. I'm the owner and principal architect of JSD Architecture Interiors, and I've also been recently appointed as one of the architect chairs for the, and a voting member of the Bayside Design Review Committee for the County of San Mateo. So I'm here today with Heba, the homeowner here, and I'll be clarifying some project details and while also responding to the appellant's points. And Heba will go over some of the timeline and details with the interactions with the appellant, the neighbor. So to start, I'll address the appellant's first two points on privacy concerns, and this is ordered from their appeal application with four points. So the first two were about privacy concerns and the applicability of the city's single-family dwelling design guidelines. So first of all, the proposed distances between the nearest walls between neighbors is over fifty feet apart, and this is more than double the distance between the adjacent side neighbors and who have shown or expressed support for the project. Regarding the design guidelines, the relationship between rear neighbors is perhaps a little unclear, and perhaps maybe the reason why there's a misunderstanding here. But there is, one of the pages, on page six, under neighborhood character. In those diagrams, the neighborhood context includes all neighbors, such as rear neighbors, but in the diagram for immediate context, it only refers to side neighbors. So it is my interpretation that the design guidelines differentiate between types of neighbors when we're referring to specifics in the text. So regarding the appellant's reference to Section Six B, privacy placement of second story, what was cropped out perhaps in that slide was that there are illustrations of the front and sides of the houses, but nothing for the back. And while I do see those bullet points referring to neighborhood privacy, I also see under, it says do this near the bottom, it says, and I quote, "The second-story addition includes large new windows on the front and smaller windows on the side to minimize privacy impacts." So seeing that there's a lack of rear view illustrations and no mention of rear windows in any of the texts on this page, it seems like it's perhaps one of those instances where privacy concerns are more applicable to the immediate context, as in the side neighbors, rather than the neighborhood context, which is rear neighbors and the appellant's jurisdiction. And I also wanted to add that the second-floor design has a primary bedroom facing the front of the house, and we have kept low-traffic areas towards the back. So that's the bathroom, the hallway, and the stairs, and those, that's where the windows in question are located. We have already added obscure glazing to them, not out of necessity or requirements, but to address privacy concerns raised by the applicant. So we feel that the privacy concerns have already been addressed and are now a non-issue because we are, A, more than fifty feet away from each other, B, rear neighbors are not clearly defined or applicable to privacy concerns in the design guidelines, and C, when we have already added obscure glazing when they're not required and have proposed landscaping along the rear of the house. Moving to the appellant's point number three about window size, about the meeting. So we noticed that the window sizes at the neighborhood meeting on May twenty-eighth from last year were not the latest, and so we did follow up with the updated plans on June eighth, a couple days later, same year, last year. So I apologize about the incorrect window sizes. This was a change that was, that did not happen intentionally and was more due to confusion on me and my team's part on the latest iteration of the plans and also the lag time between printing deadlines and the meeting date. So I'm sorry if the appellant felt that this honest mistake was intentional or in any way done to intrude upon their privacy. And looking back on the neighborhood meeting, the rear windows were addressed and discussed, but the appellant had mentioned that perhaps opacity or type of window could address privacy concerns. The majority of the meeting time was really used to discuss that large oak tree at the back between the two properties. All neighbors were unanimous in agreeing to remove that tree due to safety concerns due to its decayed condition, and this was actually taken care of by the, by the homeowners soon afterwards with an approved tree removal permit. That being said, even though the appellant has called the windows big and asked for proposed spaces, if they really need to be that many such big windows, they are typical normal-sized windows. The four-feet heights are minimum code-required egress windows, windows, sorry, are normal minimum code, code-required heights for egress windows, and so the appellant's mentioning that they have bedroom windows at the back, if they have typical eight-foot ceilings with the six-foot-eight head heights, they also have four-feet minimum-height window sizes. So lastly, to address the appellant's point number four about the perhaps error in the findings for approval, we would, we would actually have liked to be informed about those conversations. We were not aware about this comment until we requested more appeal details from our planner a week before our last hearing date, and so we would have liked to have the opportunity to discuss this with our planner before a response went out to the appellant. So we would like to politely request that in the future, the architect and homeowners are informed of any project-related questions and details, especially if they pertain to changes to the findings for approval, and that we would like to be informed before information is provided to third parties.
I would like to start with a little bit about us. My name is Heba de Grootan. My spouse, Arson, and myself are the applicants and residents of 329 Greenfield. Thank you for taking the time to review our case tonight. We are a family of four with two young children living in a thirteen-hundred square foot home. First and foremost, we love our neighborhood and our proximity to my mom up the street, and being close to family is invaluable, especially for our children. But secondly, and equally as important, the record-high and rising cost of real estate made it more logical for us financially to expand our home rather than purchase a new larger home in the same area. Additionally, my husband's family have been staying with us this last year to help with our childcare needs, and we would like to have them eventually move from overseas to live with us as they get older and... live with us as they get older and need our care. This upgrade will give our family the extra room we need to live and grow comfortably while still staying close to our relatives and keeping our friendly neighborhood ties Next, I will discuss the timelines and email correspondence summary with the appellant. During the neighborhood meeting, the discussion points from the appellant were namely the removal of the heritage tree, as well as some questions involving potential demolition damage to the back seam of our adjoining sheds. He also asked to review the plans, and we promptly provided those shortly after the meeting. To address the appellant's privacy concerns after the review, after they reviewed the plans, we had several email correspondences between June 8th and July 1st of 2022. In those emails, we suggested privacy hedging with the cost of trees on both sides of the fence covered by us and privacy glazing on the rear south-facing windows of the second story. The appellant's only agreeable solution was moving all second-story back windows to the side walls facing neighbors who are closer in distance. After going back and forth over email, we felt the appellant was overreaching with his requests, and we did not feel it was fair to us to negotiate further directly. We decided to leverage the city planner's guidance. Later on, we received feedback that our proposed solutions were acceptable by our planner, Kenneth, to address the appellant's concerns. We only heard about the suggestion by the appellant to raise the window sills to five feet in the context of an otherwise appeal, and this happened shortly before the plan approval. We believe this suggestion is overreaching and prescriptive, and accepting the appeal on the subjective premise would set a precedent for future cases. We believe that changing these windows to clear story and/or raising the sills above eye level would negatively impact and disrupt the design harmony of our windows throughout the addition, as well as darken those spaces significantly. We would prefer to utilize landscaping, glazing, and higher fencing and/or lattices to mitigate these concerns, given how far the distances are between our walls. I would like to close off with some remarks about the design choices we made. The windows in question are the master-level bathroom, hallway, and staircase windows. We have no intention of spending extended periods of time near them by design. Our goal is to have better access to sunlight as those windows are facing south. Our initial proposal to add frosting to those windows demonstrates this intent clearly. We did our best to accommodate the neighbor's request, but we feel it is a matter of shared responsibility, as it's quite difficult for one side to perfectly capture the other's privacy preferences without efforts to enhance these features on both sides. If the appellant would like to take those extra measures, hedging and awnings are also viable options, and as I mentioned earlier, we did offer to take on the financial burden of the hedging on their side as well, but the appellant did not acknowledge this. Lastly, due to the sloping nature of our street, the elevation differences between adjacent houses on Greenfield already give direct sightlines into neighboring backyards from higher-positioned properties into lower elevation spans. From a backyard vantage point, our right-hand neighbors at 333 Greenfield currently have a clear view of the appellant's backyard windows, as well as our backyard, side yard, and bedroom, bathroom windows. Thank you so much for your consideration, and that's all for us tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments and presentation. All right. At this time, I want to open it up to see if there are any clarifying questions from the planning commissioners. Does anyone have any questions?
Through the chair, may I make a comment on the resolution in the packet, please?
Yes.
Okay. On the second-to-last whereas, I just want to clarify that I believe there's two words missing, and it should be, it should be, whereas the planning commission held a public hearing and voted to grant the continuance on the appeal on May 9th, 2023, duly notice at which all public comments were considered. This is not a substantive change, but just a change for the record that staff recommends. It would just be the insertion of the words and voted on the continuance.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Do you have any comments or, I mean, any questions at this time, Seema?
Through the chair, yes. I have a question for staff, and I'm sorry, this came up as I was listening to the presentation, so I apologize for not sharing this in advance. I understand if you don't have the answer immediately. I also noticed the elevation change difference between adjoining properties on this street and was curious, looking at the appellant's property, they have a neighbor adjacent to them, I think the address is 336 Midvale. That adjacent neighbor appears to be, I was doing some measurements on Google Maps, about 23 feet away, and even though it's like a, maybe a one-and-a-half-story home or a ranch, ranch-style home, because of the elevation change, they have, they have windows that overlook the appellant's property, and I was wondering if staff happens to know what the size of those windows are in comparison to the applicant's rear windows and whether the windows at 336 Midvale are frosted?
Through the chair, Randall Bustos, senior planner. I don't think we have that immediately offhand, but we could look into that through proper records.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Commissioner, go right ahead.
Thank you for your presentations, or the three presentations. And one thing struck me as we were going through specifically the windows. So for, for a bedroom, is it required that there are exterior windows for egress?
Yes, there is.
And that sill height is roughly four feet or 36 inches?
No. That I don't have offhand, the code requirement.
It's shorter.
The height of the window is four feet, not the sill.
Right. Sill is roughly 36 inches or so.
Yeah, is, but I believe that bedroom space is located in the front of the addition.
That's what I was-
Oh, okay.
So, so these windows, including the one that serves the bathroom, would not be required to be operable? Is that true?
I believe that is correct for bathroom windows.
Okay. But the other windows are serving a hallway and a stairwell, so those would not be categorized as emergency exit windows?
I think that's correct. I believe just bedrooms as sleeping areas would require windows be operable for egress, unless there's others on the diaphragm that could correct that.
Okay. All right. That was my only question at this point. Thank you.
That's my understanding of the California Building Code as well. Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, through the chair. And the first question, if staff does not have the answer, I'll drop it, but I'm just curious. It's a two-part question. How long ago were these residential guidelines approved? Like, how long have we been using them? Do we know?
I'd have to look, but our single-family dwelling design guidelines, I think, have been in place since early 2000s.
Okay. And how many second-story additions does staff review and approve typically per year?
I'd say on average, we receive about 75 to 100 applications in total, and my guess is probably three-quarters of them would be second-story additions or new single-family homes. The bulk of our projects are-
Okay.
-single-family.
And how many, so in staff, is generally for nearly all of these, the final arbiter of which projects comply with the design guidelines?
Yes. Single-family projects are able to be approved at the zoning administrator level, so it's a staff-level approval. In instances where there's controversy or neighborhood pushback, there have been instances where they've been appealed, or the commission has called it up, or where staff has elevated it to the commission level, but a great bulk of our single-family projects are approved at the staff level.
And so the, this, the interpretation of the guidelines is typically based on staff precedent over the course of the decades that this has been law?
Yeah. The zoning administrator and staff are quite consistent in how we've applied the guidelines because they are guidelines, but I would say that we've been pretty practical and consistent with who we've applied them.
Okay. Thank you. The other question is for the applicant architect, and unfortunately, my computer is not working right now tonight. So this is a question about the, the type of window in terms of the opening type. Are they sash windows? What are the, what is the mechanism for the proposed windows? Okay. Thank you.
According to our current plans, we have one casement windows, but the other ones are not defined. It's not required for us to say what type of windows, so usually they're undecided until really when, then the homeowner buys it, but I, I would, I would, no, we have casement window on one of them.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all the questions I have.
Chair Wiggins, do you have any other questions? I have one question that's kind of along the lines of what you were asking, so for staff. So we get these notifications in our email as planning commissioners when the zoning administrator has approved, you know, a project, and, and I can only remember one project that was appealed and, well, I don't even know if it was appealed. It was brought before the planning commission, and that was the house in the Baywood neighborhood that was going to be, that is, you know, planned to be torn down and rebuilt. And that was, I guess I just want to sort of see what the difference is. Is that, was that project one that could have been approved at the zoning administrator level?
Yeah, through the chair, the, I think the project referencing is 415 Fairfax, which was considered and approved by the commission in July of last year. That, as a single-family project, that could have been, the zoning administrator did have the ability to approve it, but because of the controversy and just the difficulty in making findings for the tree removal, as well as the controversy related to the historic nature of the home, that was elevated by staff, and the code does allow staff to elevate those kinds of projects.
But it also allows staff to approve a tear-down in a, in a new house-
Yes.
-without coming to the planning commission?
Correct. Yeah. The zoning administrator can approve single-family demolitions and single-family replacement homes.
Okay. Okay. So if the planning commission doesn't have any other clarifying questions, we can go open it up to public comment at this time. So at this time, are there any public speakers that would like to come forward on this project?
Chair Williams, there are no public speakers.
So I think then the applicant does not need to respond to any public comments, so at this point, we can close the public hearing and the commission can deliberate on the project and the decision, and come to a decision.
Through the chair, I do have one other question for the applicant.
Mm-hmm. Go right ahead.
Since the appellant appears to be mostly concerned or had suggested fixing the windows so they're not operable, and since they are not required as an emergency exit, is that something that you have considered or would consider?
Come on up.
Hi, my name is Arthan. Just to answer that question, so we have not thought about it, but this never came up as kind of a suggestion in the email correspondence. So we haven't thought about it in that way. We could evaluate it in a way, but I think at the moment, I'm not sure if it would be, we want to commit to it on the spot. But again, like when we talked about it over email with the, with the appellant, this was, this didn't stand out as an option because we really gave out all the options, and then the general feedback that we got was frosting wasn't protecting their privacy, it was just for us, and then we left it at that. And then afterwards, we, we moved on to contact the city planner.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to add that if we fix the windows, there, I think there's some that are, are a good contender for being fixed, but I am a little concerned about the bathrooms one, just for ventilation purposes.
Thank you. And I actually have a question about the process. So, you know, we can provide our comments, and then we want to, you know, take a vote on whether or not to deny the appeal, and, you know, sometimes there's an opportunity to add our, you know, comments into our decision, into our vote, or into our motion, I guess. I don't know if that's something we may want to consider as we provide comments, or, or the other option for us, I guess, and this is sort of a question for you, the other option is to just provide our comments so that the applicant can then, you know, take it or leave it, but I'm not sure if that's, you know, the best tactic for this, you know, debate between the two parties, the two neighbors.
I'd be happy to respond. Good evening, Honorable Commissioners, Manyar Santhi, Planning Manager and Zoning Administrator for the city. So since this is an appeal before the planning commission, you know, we have a draft resolution that outlines staff's recommendation. The commission has the option to take that resolution and add additional, you know, reasons why they agree. You also have the option to add conditions of approval that you think could be appropriate in order to make the findings that are needed to uphold the zoning administrator decision. Alternatively, if the commission decides to grant the appeal and deny the application, then the, the commission would have to outline the reasons for doing so, and staff would have to go back and draft a new resolution that, that captures the commission comments. So those are sort of the two or three options that are available to the commission.
Great. Thank you. That was helpful. All right. So at this time, I think we should proceed with our comments then. Who would like to begin? Commissioner Patel?
You know, looking, looking at these properties, looking at the adjacent side properties, looking at the elevation changes, seeing that the neighbors to the appellant's properties already overlook them, and that those side windows on those properties visually appear to be roughly the same size as the proposed rear windows, they don't appear to be frosted from the street view images, they appear to have curtains on them, they appear to be sash windows that are openable. It, it to me seems odd to hold a rear neighbor at a, over double the distance to a more strict privacy standard than a side neighbor that already exists. So I think, to me, that I am not inclined to grant the appeal, and, you know, as, as others have noted, privacy measures can be taken by both parties, and if there are concerns about the views into the windows, curtains and shades are always an option to maintain privacy. So I think, I think the burden on privacy cannot be solely on one party, it has to be shared. Those, just my comments and opinions.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Ebner, do you want to go next?
Sure. I think that the applicant has definitely made appropriate changes to address the appellant's requests at a substantial cost if you're talking about planting mature trees along that full length of fence and putting in film, if you will, on the windows. And I, I want to let the applicant know that my suggestion wasn't something that I expected you to agree to. you to agree to, yet I would think in the spirit of neighborly consideration, it might be something that you would do to make sure that your neighbor is even more comfortable with your addition and to bring some harmony to your area of the neighborhood. I don't really see much of a reason to have operable windows there, yet in the same vein, you're not going to stand in a stairwell and stare at your neighbors. So I think that you've done what you should do to please your neighbors, and I will not be in favor of the appellant in this case. But, you know, it's, we only see a few of these a year, if that, and they're probably the most somewhat difficult because there's more emotions involved. And I think it's exceedingly important that neighbors are able to get along and work through it. I think the city does a fantastic job of preparing the applicant and the appellant in what can or cannot be expected, and giving each party equal amount of time to express their views shows that the city does take these seriously, and they put a lot of effort into it. And it's a process that I think is done very well, and it's done very fairly. But I will not be voting to uphold the appellant's request. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Nugent?
First, I want to say, as a landscape architect, privacy is one of the things that I have had to deal with throughout my career. It's one of those big, and one of the most contentious issues that tends to get brought up at hearings for projects. And privacy is nearly always a contentious issue when that happens. I understand the appellant's concern. The change is, you know, is going to be dramatic at first to see a new floor overlooking their yard, which I'm sure you've gotten used to over the years that you've enjoyed your house. As a, as a commission, we are tasked to understand what precedent is, what is considered reasonable from that precedent, and how the guidelines should be interpreted. And I think that doing so shows me that staff's determination was a reasonable one. And I think that the accommodations that the applicants are providing are acceptable based on our guidelines. The suggestion that I would have is that I would recommend that you use casement windows, simply because if you ever do need the circulation, air circulation, you can get a fair amount without opening directly on your rear neighbor's yard. You can open up and get a good amount of volume through the window without actually visually directly seeing the yard. And I think that that alone would likely eliminate 99% of the times that you would happen to open your windows, being able to see down on the neighbor's yard. I have a casement window in my bedroom, and my bedroom overlooks my side neighbor. And I open it occasionally to get air circulation, and I never open it to the point where I can see into their house. It works out well. I have a great relationship with my neighbor, and I have never had an issue. I actually have frosted it because I wanted the additional privacy. And I think that that, what you're proposing, if you can do casement windows, should adequately satisfy everybody, because you're just not likely to see the rear neighbor when you open the window in such a way. I appreciate the proposed hedge, and I want to make sure that it's an evergreen hedge. So, yeah. But other than that, those are my comments. I know it can be intimidating to come before a commission for this, and it can be, you know, emotional. And I think that, you know, over time, what I've found is that neighbors generally come to, come quite quickly to peace with the changes that occur. And I hope that that can happen. Those are my comments.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I probably don't have too much to add to what my fellow commissioners have already said. I have, you know, I have a neighbor who has a second floor addition that was done before I moved in, and, you know, I can, I can appreciate the sense that it's looming, and I have been putting up hedges, trying to make, you know, minimize it. So I can understand, I think, both sides a little bit, and as well, certainly the challenge of coming before a commission. And so I appreciate the difficulty of this. For me, I'm looking at this as trying to interpret the guidelines as they're written. And I think there's a range of levels of privacy that could be created, and I don't see anything in the guidelines that, you know, really demands a maximum amount of privacy. I think there's a level of discretion and reasonableness. And as I reviewed it, I initially felt that staff was reasonable. And as I listened to everything here and go through the details, I continue to feel that staff was reasonable in their interpretation, and that, really, that the applicant did make a reasonable effort. Could it be, could there be more privacy? Yes. Could there also have been less? Also, yes. And so it's the challenge of this, applying discretion and reasonableness to this. So I wish everyone the best and hope that it's, that good neighbors can be good neighbors. I agree with the other suggestions about considerations you could make to the windows. I still think even if it's a double-hung window, you can crack the top, you can crack the bottom, you get ventilation, and you don't, you can't really look out. And so I think, please, consider taking steps to, you know, to remain good neighbors. But I feel, along with the other commissioners that have spoken, that I would, I'll be planning to uphold staff's denial of the appeal. Those are all my comments.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the presentations and for all the work that everyone's put in, because I know there's been a lot of, you know, effort to come to terms on this. And I do, I do want to say that I do feel that the applicant has made efforts to address their privacy concerns. And my question about conditions of approval, I'm not really inclined to add on conditions of approval, but I do have some comments, and just in general. I mean, I think, I think that the obscure glass or frosted glass is somewhat of a, it's a substantial compromise, because in my mind, you know, windows are for, yes, for light, they're for ventilation, they're for the ability to see into your backyard where your children might be playing, you know, to look out and see if it's a sunny day or a rainy day, but you won't be able to do that with obscure glass. So, yes, there's other windows in the bedroom area, but, you know, so it is a compromise, and I recognize that the applicant has made that compromise. I think the window suggestions are good ones, that casement has a benefit, or a double-hung, which means that the top has to come down as well as the bottom going up, so that you have the option of just lowering the top. So I think there's some, you know, a little bit further detail that the architect and the applicant can work on to make sure the windows are, you know, meet those requirements. But those are just my comments. Again, they're not going to be conditions of approval. In my mind, the project is compliant with, you know, allowable height, setbacks, FARs. I mean, not in my mind, and it's clear that that's the case. So the, again, the team has done a good job at, you know, creating some additional space for their family without, you know, a much more massive project than, that it could have been. So, what was I going to say about that? I guess the project's compliant. Let's see, I guess the windows, oh, I do, I guess I was just going to say, I think the cross-ventilation feature is an important one. I mean, we're always talking about sustainability, and, you know, natural ventilation is the easiest way on a hot day to, you know, bring that cool morning air in, close up your house, and open it up in the evening. We're here in a climate where opening your windows is kind of a green thing to do, a sustainable thing to do. So I, I hate to see the windows become fixed all the way around. I certainly think that it's important in the rest, in the bathroom. Again, you can crack the top part of the window, and you don't have to turn on the fan, and, you know, it's, it's sort of simple mechanical engineering. So I do hope that some, you know, can, some compromise, that they don't need to further compromise and provide fixed windows. I do agree with the architect that this is, that the design guidelines really apply to the neighbors to the side or to the closest neighbors. In this case, when you, I think the appellant's slides were very helpful in many ways, but you, but imposing the elevation to, you know, the view from the back of your house was a little bit misleading, because that second floor is well recessed from the first floor of the, of the new, of the existing house. So then the other item I wanted, the two other items I wanted to just touch on. Oh, I guess I was going to add that in addition to being compliant with the, you know, zoning regulations, they also did not go above the standard typical eight-foot top of plate height that we see on a lot of projects. There's a lot of projects, one we saw, one that was before the planning commission recently, where the top of plate heights were like, you know, nine-foot, 10-foot high, creating much bigger massing of the building than really necessary for a, you know, single-family home. So I appreciate that it's a standard eight-foot plate height, not any higher than that. Lastly, I just wanted to touch on the, on the planting at the, at the rear fence. I think that that can go a long ways. I also have a second-story addition next to my one-story house, right next to it, and it was there when I moved in. And we had some scrawny trees along the side that are now gone, and we planted pitasporum. There's many nice varieties. I'm really delighted, I don't know what you think of them as a landscape architect, but they've grown so fast and tall, and they're, you know, wide, and they're clean, and fast-growing. So I would suggest looking at pitasporum as a nice way to screen here from your neighbors. I think that covers it. Those are my comments. So, yeah, we can take a vote, but I also will be adopting the resolution to deny the appeal. So, should we put that slide on? And we can go ahead and take--
Through the chair, may I ask one more question? Sorry for the late-breaking question. Based on what the applicant said, is there a disagreement about the frosting on the stairwell window? Or is, are both sides in agreement that the stairwell window should be frosted?
Through the chair, the staff report clarifies that the stairway windows were always proposed to be frosted.
Okay, thank you.
It was the zoning administrator's decision that in error didn't note that those windows would be frosted, but the plans and now the resolution do show that the stairway windows would be frosted.
Great, thank you.
And I actually wanted to just sort of say one more thing, which is to reiterate what the other planning commissioners have said, that, you know, you know, I hope that you all can come to, you know, a good, you know, good relationship over this. And, you know, it's a, it's a, it sounds like a great neighborhood and some great families that are neighbors. So I hope, I hope we can move forward on that, so. All right, those are my comments, and I think at this time, we should, I need a motion to adopt the resolution.
Through the chair, one small question.
Okay.
To staff, do we need to say anything to incorporate the two words that city attorney suggested?
Yeah.
Or can I just say that now? We'd like to include that. Thank you. Then with that, can I make a motion to adopt the resolution to deny the appeal of the zoning administrator's decision to approve the single-family dwelling design review?
I'll second that motion.
All right, thank you. Can I have a vote, please?
Chair Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ebner?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiggins?
Yes.
All right, with that--
Through the chair, if I could just note for the members of the public that the planning commission's action can be appealed to the city council within 10, 10 calendar days.
All right, thank you for that. All right, with that, I can close that item, and we'll move on to the next item. Thank you for your time and your efforts on this. Yeah, let's take a five-minute break, please. Yeah, let's take a five-minute break, please. All right, I'll call the meeting to order. So at this time, we can move on to item number two. All right, will you read the item, please?
Item number two, allow for additional office space in lieu of retail at the north block of Hillsdale Shopping Center at 6031st Avenue, PA 2022022.
All right, thank you. So for this, we will start with the staff presentation, followed by, excuse me, clarifying questions from the commission, and then move on to public comments. Members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak, depending on the number of speakers. And then once the public hearing is closed, the commission will deliberate and provide a recommendation to the city council. You can go ahead and get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Williams, members of the planning commission, Randall Bustos, senior planner, and staff planner for agenda item two. This evening, a public hearing for a site plan, architectural review modification for the north block of the Hillsdale Shopping Center. So I'll start by going over a brief project background, which includes the location, as well as an explanation of the original and the proposed project approvals, as well as public input. The subject site is the Hillsdale Shopping Center, which is a 40-acre shopping center consisting of three primary blocks, known as the North Block, Mid, and South Block. The shopping center has a combined floor area of approximately 1.15 million square feet of commercial uses. This evening, the project being considered is specific to the North Block, shown in green, which has a total parcel area of 12.2 acres. The site is zoned C2-2/ Q5 for regional community commercial with a Q5 overlay. The adjacent uses include residential uses to the west and the north, as well as other commercial uses to the south, the east, and the north. And lastly, shown in red, this shows the approximate location of the relocated Hillsdale Caltrain Station, which is less than a half-mile from the site. So looking more closely at the North Block, this is an aerial of the existing development, which was recently developed. The North Block redevelopment was approved by the city council in 2016, and construction was substantially completed in 2020. The overall program included approximately 177,000 square feet of retail uses and just over 16,000 square feet of office uses. So here's a second view of the North Block. This item is specific to Building L, which was approved for retail and cinema uses on the second floor. This modification this evening would allow up to 37,611 square feet of the first floor of Building L to be used for either office uses or retail uses. The space is currently vacant and would allow the mall owner to lease the space to retail users as originally approved in 2016, or to office uses if approved this evening. I do want to note that office uses are a permitted use in this zone, but the total office floor area is greater than what was approved and evaluated in the approved 2016 application, thus necessitating this evening's modification. With respect to public input, the applicant held the required neighborhood meeting in January of 2022, in which five members of the public attended. The topics raised during the meeting covered the question for the demand for office uses, as well as the future of the shopping center as a whole. In preparation for tonight's hearing, staff released a public notice at a radius of 1,000 feet, as well as to specific interested parties. The applicant also placed a placard on the project site. As of the date of the publication of the staff report, staff did not receive public comments during the project review. After the release of the agenda, staff did receive two public comments that focused on the future development of the shopping center as a whole. So these comments have been forwarded to the commission. And I do want to note again this evening that the item is specific to the first floor of Building L and not the whole shopping center as a whole. So shifting now to code and policy review, beginning with the general plan. The project has a land use designation of regional community commercial and a zoning designation of C2-2, consistent with that land use designation, as well as a Q5 overlay. So this table shows the net change in retail and office uses. And as noted previously, this modification would allow the owner to lease the space to either an office or a retail tenant if approved. With respect to specific plans, the project is within three specific plan areas. The first is the El Camino Real Master Plan, which outlines goals and policies for sites along El Camino Real between Highway 92 and the city's southern limits. Because the project proposes no changes to the exterior of the building or the site plan, the project would not affect the North Block's overall consistency with this plan. Second, the site is within the Real Corridor Plan. The site is outside of the TOD, the Transit Oriented Development Zone, but is within the overall plan area. And lastly, the site is within the Hillsdale Station Area Plan, which, similar to the Real Corridor Plan, contains encouragement for production measures, which this project is consistent with, given its inclusion of transportation demand management plan measures for the net increase in the office uses. Lastly, regarding environmental review, staff has prepared an addendum to the original mitigated negative declaration in conformance with CEQA. The addendum evaluates the proposed land use change and concludes that no new significant environmental effects are anticipated to occur. As part of the addendum completion, the city conducted a peer review of the applicant's transportation analysis, which was prepared by Kim Lee Horn. The analysis concludes that with respect to level of service, or LOS, the project would reduce both daily and PM peak hour trips, but increase AM peak hour trips. With respect to vehicle miles traveled, or VMT, the analysis concludes that the project would reduce retail VMT, given the reduction in retail floor area, but does result in an office VMT of 13.3 vehicle miles traveled per employee. That is within thresholds and is achieved through the applicant's proposal for a transportation demand management plan that overall reduces the office vehicle miles traveled by 15%. So before wrapping up with the recommendation, I did want to note some project-specific conditions of approval, the titles of which are listed here. First two, because of the net change in land uses, the applicant would be responsible for a payment of commercial linkage and childcare development fees in the event an office user does occupy the space. Because the building does exist and is allocated for retail uses, the applicant would be credited for the payment already made for those retail uses. Next, condition 11 specifies that the ground floor of Building L would need to preserve interior visibility and prevent visual clutter in conformance with the El Camino Real Master Plan. And lastly, as discussed in the previous slide, the project is subject to TDM implementation and monitoring. So with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt a resolution to approve a site plan architectural review modification to enable office uses at Building L and adopt an addendum to assess the environmental impacts of the project. This concludes staff's presentation. Happy to take questions.
All right, thank you for your presentation. Do any of the planning commissioners have questions at this time?
Through the chair, one question for the applicant. Is it, oh, is there a presentation? I'm hearing there's a presentation. We're doing questions-
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I always do that. Applicant presentation is next. I feel like I often do that.
Good evening.
I'm helping myself out here.
Okay, great.
Good evening, Chair Williams and members of the planning commission. My name is David Bohannon, and I am the president and CEO of the David D. Bohannon Organization, representing the ownership of the Hillsdale Shopping Center. We are here tonight because we are seeking to add the potential for office uses in Building L of the North Block, which has sat vacant since 2019. This request merely adds flexibility to our permit so that we can pursue both retail and office tenants to get the building leased up. We do not have an office tenant lined up. We're simply asking for optionality to help solve the vacancy problem. I would like to take a few minutes this evening to describe the current leasing dynamics and be available for any questions you might have. We also have Brian Cleary from Northwood, our joint venture partner, and Mike Maury from Kim Lee Horn, our traffic consultant, available on Zoom. We have been diligently trying to lease Building L over the past few years and have spoken to numerous major retailers, all of whom have turned down the space. We believe this reluctance is based on a number of factors. First, the pandemic, which reset tenant expectations for various issues such as easy access to parking, depth and size of space, signage opportunities, loading, and others. Secondly, probably most important, large footprint retailers have reconfigured their stores to be smaller, more efficient, and not build-to-suit in order to avoid construction costs, supply chain issues, and permit lead times. Third, these large-format tenants continue to navigate a post-COVID world, and these difficult economic realities mean tenants require discounted rents, with very high landlord contributions for tenant improvements that simply make these deals untenable. We also have several spaces within the shopping center that have been vacant for a long period of time due to these tenants rethinking their size requirements. Therefore, this dynamic has made it extremely difficult to lease an unimproved first-generation space, such as Building L, when the more attractive alternative is an improved space that is already ready to be occupied. Therefore, the added ability to potentially lease Building L to office users will create more opportunity to fill the space and bring more people to the North Block, who will generate additional retail sales tax for the city. Finally, as you are aware, we are currently engaged in an extensive conversation with the San Mateo community about what a reimagined Hillsdale might be. The leasing challenges we face here are not unique, and these retail trends will put the future of the mall at risk. We look forward to working with the city and the community as we envision what's next for Hillsdale. We can say tonight that the North Block has been very popular with residents and will remain a vital component of anything we do in the future. Thank you for your consideration this evening, and we ask that you approve this request so that we can unlock more success for the North Block and for the city.
All right, thank you for your presentation. Now, does anyone have clarifying questions?
Through the chair, and just for the record, that answered my question.
Does anyone else have questions?
Yes, through the chair, I have a question for the applicant. You mentioned that this first floor of Building L has sat vacant since 2019. I was curious what, if anything, you have done since then to try and get that space leased? You know, I'm sure you've tried something, so I'm curious to hear. Have you offered discounted rent? Have you offered any other incentives to potential retailers to try and lease the
Yes, but you're asking the wrong guy about specifics that I can't really speak to. But we do have Brian Cleary available on Zoom, and I would refer to Brian on that if Brian wants to make some comments about some of the efforts. It's not just Building L that we've been working hard to try and lease, but the considerable vacancy that we have in the main block of the mall. So we continue to make efforts to find a retailer, and that would be our preference. But, so anyway, if Brian's available to comment on that, I'll allow that.
Yes, I am here. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you for your time, and thank you, David. To answer the direct question, we've done quite a bit, including, you know, some of the things we've done include creating renderings and differing space plans for potential tenants so they can visualize how their space would lay out, but ultimately what it would look like from the exterior and the interior. Some of the economic considerations are extremely challenging. You know, in the indoor mall, in order to keep some of our tenants, we continually have to relieve rent and potentially go to more of a revenue-sharing concept, the percentage rent concept. And the most difficult thing about Building L here is the substantial tenant improvement allowance or capital cost needed to get a tenant of this size up and running. But I think the most important thing to what David spoke to is that these size requirements have changed drastically since COVID. You're now seeing several retailers think about more urban and smaller, dense, more efficient sizing, which makes a large 40,000-square-foot block extremely difficult to lease and even difficult to get some tenants to come out and look at.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other questions? Nobody has? Okay, I have one question, which is for staff, and something I probably should know the difference, but this project was noted, it's outside the transit-oriented development area, but it's within the Rail Corridor Plan. Can you clarify that? I was actually surprised with Building L being close to the train station, that it was outside that. Is it because of the zoning, or is it because of the distance?
Through the chair, it's a combination of both. So when the Rail Corridor Plan was implemented, and it goes 2008, there were certain sites that were within the closest proximity of the Hayward Park Caltrain Station, Hillsdale Caltrain Station, that were identified as having potential to redevelop, just given their existing use and their, again, proximity to transit. So those sites were then rezoned to TOD, Transit Oriented Development, so that it's a zone that exists in the city. The mall itself, it is still within a half-mile of transit, but it retained its commercial C2 zoning district. So it is, again, within the plan area, so it's subject to certain policies, but not to the degree to which TOD zone properties are.
All right, well, if there's no further questions, we can now open it up to public comment. So are there, at this time, are there any members of the public that would like to speak? And how many do we have?
Chair Williams, we have one in-person public speaker and none via Zoom. Would you like to do three minutes?
Sure, three minutes is fine.
So go ahead, Michael.
Wait a second until I get this done. Okay. I think you broke it. Okay. Thank you for giving me three minutes. I'm currently president of the Bearsford Hillsdale Neighborhood Association, and just kind of became aware of this project. As a neighborhood that surrounds the Hillsdale Mall, all the changes, the good, the bad- As a neighborhood that surrounds the Hillsdale Mall, all the changes, the good, the bad, the ugly have all been effective or affected the neighborhoods in and around the project, which is our Hillsdale-Bearsford neighborhood. And so, we're more than happy to work with Bohannon's development of this project, and if they need to change it and put a commercial property in there to be vibrant and to help them out, I don't think anybody would disagree with that. Our concerns would be more about the traffic, the parking in and around our neighborhood, whether the parking is going to be sufficient for the amount of people that are coming in, if it is a commercial. Hopefully, they won't spread out and have to either park in the neighborhoods, which we find offensive. As long as they can provide parking on-site would be important. And just the traffic concerns, if there are any, would like to know how many more people are coming in during the school hours. Hillsdaleism is just awful. If you've ever tried to get up there, try getting up between 8:00 and 8:30, it's a parking lot driving through there. And then after school, I have a lot of kids coming in, walking in and out of the mall. More traffic, of course, brings more concerns. So, if all those things are met, and if the project can keep our Neighborhood Association updated on the transgressions, you know, what's going to pursue in the future, who's coming in, and all the details, we would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public speakers, Mary?
There are none.
Okay. So, at this time, I can close the public hearing portion of the...
Close the public comment period?
I mean, close the public comment period. Thank you. And then the commission can deliberate. So, at this time, is there anyone that would like to start with comments?
Through the chair, I'll start.
Great.
I think that having vacancies is overall detrimental to the city, and it would be, you know, I've used this space, as many of you I'm sure have, and so I've always noticed that portion of the property being vacant, and having another means to fill that up seems like a very positive thing to do. I do note, just looking at the maps, this site is quite close to the new Hillsdale Caltrain Station, and, you know, more so even than retail, office workers will often position themselves to utilize transit because it's a regular, daily, scheduled thing, and that's what typical office workers are based on with their hours. And so, this actually gives an opportunity for more transit use in this site than probably retail would have. So, I think that on that net, that's a positive. The, you know, just having the additional flexibility seems a good thing. You know, and then there's a lot of parking that's available at the start of the day because the mall hours are slightly different than typical office hours. So, it seems like a positive change to me, just to get that space leased up, add vibrancy. Those are the comments I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Patel?
Thank you, through the chair. I think there are quite a few advantages to this request. I also have a couple of concerns as well, and so I'm curious to hear what other commissioners think, because for me personally, I do not see a clear answer at the moment. I think just what is before us today, flexibility on 37,000 square feet of uses, seems pretty simple and pretty straightforward. But when I think about the history of large-scale development in San Mateo, looking, for example, to Bay Meadows, you had a specific plan that was designed a certain way. The ranges of that specific plan had a certain mix of residential and office. And then, over time, there were a series of SPAR modifications that were requested and granted that shifted that mix to something that ultimately became unbalanced. And I worry a lot, I've talked about this before, about many small decisions that, when added together, result in unbalance. And so, that's a little bit of what I'm concerned about right now, is are we starting to set a precedent where we're going to shift the mix of the use at the site over time in a way that perhaps was not anticipated when the original master plan and the original entitlements were created? And of course, I'm always the person who's going to think about, when we create new office, what is the resulting impact on the housing market? And so, if we're talking about 37,000 square feet of office, that's probably somewhere around 275 to 375 jobs. And we look at the commercial linkage fee, it's just over 1.2 million. The cost of one unit of affordable housing in the Bay Area has exceeded $1 million now, right? So, we're talking about potentially creating 275 to 375 new jobs and offsetting that by one, one and a half units of affordable housing. So, that concerns me as well. And then we also have, as the applicant has mentioned, a huge effort right now to rethink the future use of this site. And looking at some of the proposals that have come out, talking about 2 million square feet of office and 900 to 1,200 units of housing, so compared to the 2 million square feet of office that may be coming, this is a very small drop in the bucket. But again, I think, you know, just thinking through those implications, I wonder if it would be better to consider this shift of use as part of a broader initiative or effort so that we can be very thoughtful about what that mix of use is. So, that's kind of what I'm thinking about right now.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Ebner?
Through the chair. Thank you, staff and applicant, for the presentation. I, part of this package is an addendum to the SEQA as it pertains to mitigated negative declarations. Is that correct, Rendell?
Through the chair, yes. In conformance with SEQA, staff is recommending an addendum in analyzing that the change in land use would not result in new effects.
Okay. So, when the North Block was reviewed by the Planning Commission six or seven years ago, I was the only commissioner at that time that decided to vote against the project. And the reasons that I had voted against the project then had to do with the SEQA. And my contention then and my contention now is that the SEQA did not appropriately measure the greenhouse gas emissions, which were associated with the construction workers' commute and the subsequent workers who would be working at the retail outlets at lower wages and acknowledging the length of their commutes. I had offered some solutions which may have, in my mind, alleviated the inadequacy of the greenhouse gas emission amounts, and those mitigations were not considered or implemented into the plan. I feel that the original SEQA was inadequate, and I cannot move forward with an addendum to that SEQA which did not include greenhouse gas emissions that, in my mind, should have been. Specifically, the radius that the construction workers were gauged on was a 12-mile diameter radius from the site, and that didn't make any logical sense to me, where we're all of a sudden going to get all of our construction workers within a 12-mile radius in an extremely wealthy neighborhood or area. So, with that said, I fully understand the economic pressures here, and I can sympathize with that. Yet, one of the mitigating things that I had said is that if you build some housing on this site for the workers, then you could alleviate a substantial amount of their commute time. And with this small change to the site of only 37,000, 40,000 suites, it seems like an insignificant request, and it does make some economic sense, yet it exasperates the initial problem that I had been concerned with, is that the housing and job imbalance is going to be exasperated. And to Seema's point, to Commissioner Patel's point, is that we are taking small steps that add a lot of pressure to the system, meaning, are we actually watching our greenhouse gas emissions in our climate action plan? And how do all of these smaller projects tie together? I know that the Hillsdale Mall is scheduled to go through some substantial changes, which I'm sure will be beneficial to the public in certain manners, yet if we are not going to look at the housing and job imbalance within every project, then we are not going to get to our goals, our stated goals of having housing for all in this city. And this is not a discussion about housing specifically. My concern was more, and still is, with a SEQA that did not acknowledge or include greenhouse gas emissions in the original project. Thank you.
Through the chair, if I could just address Commissioner Ebner's comments. The item before you tonight is not the original SEQA document, so please do take that into consideration. I understand, Commissioner Ebner, that you may have had a different perspective at the time. However, my understanding is that that initial study was adopted, and therefore it stands as adopted, and therefore the addendum to that is what is now under consideration. Thank you.
I totally understand that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Wiggins?
Thank you, through the chair. My opening and probably overarching comment is that the nature of more mixes in a sort of an infill environment is a net positive. It sort of just seems a bit clear to me that introducing more mixes that should work well together, so not talking about heavy industrial, but sort of use, I think, pairs well in a mixed-use environment. It's utilizing and activating a space at a time that it typically isn't, even if compared to a retailer that was in there, you're going to see more activation in the morning, you're going to see less activation in the evening, and so you have more uses firing at different times. It's fundamentally, it's a more efficient use of the space of the parking. And so, I just, on the face of it, I'm inclined to say that's not a bad thing. I'm thinking about the broader context that's been discussed, and I don't disagree with any of that, except for I'm going to have to read the original SEQA document that I'm definitely less familiar with. But I look initially at a more vibrant, more activated space, which I think is good for sort of a sustainable community in San Mateo. And I realize that the car trips have never actually materialized because the space hasn't been created, but this is, it rings true to me that this would be a net reduction in car trips, and certainly, you know, it's relieving pressure off the PM peak time period compared to had there been retail in there. To the public commenter, I've been up by Hillsdale at kid drop-off time in the morning, and so I'm familiar with the mess that's over there. This feels to be a little bit different to me. I was always fighting my way into the neighborhood when I got further up 31st, and I think you're, hopefully, you're going to see a fair amount of public transit use, but you're obviously going to see a lot of cars coming up and down El Camino, but I don't think, I don't see that as exacerbating sort of the situations further in the neighborhood. I discussed this with staff and was looking at the amount of parking that's been provided, and it's, to me, my sense is that this is using some of the excess parking, and for me, it's hard to imagine the amount of space, the amount of parking that's there right now. You're looking at most office users coming in in a couple of hours in the morning, when that parking garage is just about empty. It doesn't, I don't see any real impacts coming from this, just practically speaking. And so, yeah, I'm inclined to say this is a net positive. I want to acknowledge here and endorse Commissioner Patel's comments, that we have a problem with the amount of affordable housing that were linked with office, and a problem with the rate at which we're collecting funding for that. And I've made those comments before on other projects that have been before us recently, and I want to see that solved. To me, this is a space that's, and I guess I don't, I thought about the idea that this is sort of pulled into the context of a larger reimagining, and I don't think it would be inappropriate to look at it that way. But at the same time, this strikes me as a bit of a pragmatic loosening of uses to avoid an empty storefront, and so I'm inclined to kind of keep it at that scale. Very excited about the future changes at Hillsdale. Plans are always just plans, so there's a long way to go in that process. Those are my comments.
All right. Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment on, Commissioner Patel, what you were saying, and just add to that. I look at this as, you know, this is an existing building that is not going to be transformed into something other than it is, and so, you know, there is an imbalance between the office space that's been developed in this region and the housing that's been developed, but there isn't an infinite demand for office, and having this space be utilized for office is not going to create, you know, even, isn't necessarily going to create even more office space somewhere else. It could actually free up land somewhere else for housing. You know, we don't know what would happen. Like, what we're trying to do is, or what we could potentially be doing is freeing up space somewhere else that is less ideal for office with an existing building. And so, to me, that seems to be a net positive, even if, you know, because you don't, you just don't know what the repercussions of that change could be. And to me, you know, having this space become office just doesn't seem to be the detriment that, say, building a new building where the potential for that piece of land is much greater for something else. The potential for this is limited to basically retail or office unless there's, you know, it would be really difficult to do anything else there. And so, I don't see this as a spot to really make a stand to prevent this option, because leaving it vacant is also, is probably a greater detriment than to not, to just have open, like, empty space in this site that is right next to transit, where otherwise an office user would go and, you know, lease out something in the middle of Santa Clara or somewhere else. Like, that, to me, seems like a net negative, where we have the potential to use an existing building that's not going to be housing for office that's right next to the train station. That, to me, is where my head is at.
All right. Thanks for your comments. These are all good comments, interesting conversation. So, my comments are that, yeah, the space has been unleashed and vacant for a number of years now, and if we want to provide... of years now, and if we want to provide the best option for a non-vacant space, we should allow the owner to consider other options besides retail. Although I think, Commissioner Patel, you make a good point about, you know, this idea of many small decisions adding up to create an impact on our housing crisis. I mean, in this case, housing's not an option that the owner's entertaining for this space at this time. So, you know, I, I agree with the comments also that, you know, a vacant space is, is, you know, is a problem as well. So, a couple of other comments I wanted to just make is that, according to staff, you know, according to the packet, office use is allowed for this zone, but obviously it was not approved for this specific space. And I mean, I think in this market, as the applicant spoke about, you know, post-pandemic, revised shopping habits due to, I guess, online shopping and Amazon Prime or whatever, you know, it makes sense to provide flexibility to the owner, to, just to provide an additional option if the, if the opportunity arose for an office or for a commercial tenant. So, the, and then the other item I just wanted to touch on was that, I just kind of wanted to make sure our condition of approval number eleven was clarified. It's a little bit vague in the, in the packet. And I think that, where is it? Visibility into the ground floor of Building L shall be maintained in accordance with the El Camino master plan. Building occupants shall not cause obstructed interior views of activity through reflective or dark tinted glass. I, I think I would also add to that, that in order to maintain, like, I don't know how it should be worded, but in order, the concept is like, in order to maintain active use, that is what the retail space was originally intended for. You know, a commercial tenant should not be, you know, blocking the glass with cubicles or, you know, there should be some attempt to design the layout of the interior space with active space along the glazing. And not just, you know, yes, it shouldn't be reflective or tinted glass either, but as required by retail spaces. So, because there's a lot of glazing there, it was more than I realized until I got into the packet. I, I guess I was kind of thinking of it from the El Camino side, but there's a lot more glazing there than I realized. So, that would be my comment, that I think condition of approval number eleven could be a little bit stronger. Let's see, I think that was all the comments I had. So, if there's no, are there any other comments from planning commissioners at this time?
Through the chair. I was probably going to circle back and bring up that same condition number eleven, so just in agreement and thinking about other, other conditions that have come up on office space downtown, where the intent is to, you know, create visual, sort of visual activation through there, and yet something happens on the interior, whether it's pull-down shades or cubicle walls or something that kind of undermines that. So, kind of in support of making that stronger. Just wanted to add that, and that was it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I would support some language like that, too, yeah.
Thank you. I, I just want to thank my fellow commissioners for their comments. I think it was really helpful to hear your perspective. I, I agree with Commissioner Nugent that vacancies are bad and, and aren't good for the community. So I completely agree with that comment. And I think, Commissioner Wiggins, you had a really good point about evening out the uses during the day, and that office use would enable the space to be utilized during perhaps less busy retail hours, and so that you're making a higher use of the site by having more mix of uses. So I think that's a really good point, too. I would just hope that in the future, as that space is considered and reimagined, that there is consideration in how we can balance out the office that is potentially being created now and any future office that may come into that site. Thank you.
All right. If there are no further comments, then we could, I'd like to request a motion. And could you bring the resolution back on screen? Randall?
Through the chair, if I could request if the majority of the commission would like a change to condition number eleven, that we specify what that change would be. This is a final action by the commission, so this is, you know, a decision time. So we'd appreciate clear language that's added to the condition.
Okay, so maybe we should talk about that for a minute. I'm looking at what it says, and currently it says, visibility into the ground floor shall be maintained in accordance with El Camino master plan. Building occupants shall not cause obstructed interior views of activity through reflective or dark tinted glass. So I would like to add to that. Shall not cause obstructed interior views of activity through reflective or dark tinted glass or interior obstructions such as cubicles, I guess, or walls?
Through the chair, what if we just deleted the part that says through reflective or dark tinted glass? So it just says occupants shall not cause obstructed interior views of activity?
Including, including the placement of furniture?
Well, just not to condition it on anything, so it just says that the occupants shall not cause obstructed interior views of activity by any means.
You could, through the chair, you could, one way to achieve that would be adding occupants shall not cause obstructed interior views of activity, comma, including through reflective or tinted glass furnishings such as cubicles or other, or other similar, similar things. Trying to think of a synonym for things. But that way, including is not, doesn't, doesn't exclude things that, that would be similar and be interpretable by staff.
Yeah, I mean, I hate to be too, like, restrictive, because I run into this on my projects in my work as an architect. But, you know, sometimes you have to jog a wall in front of the glass if it's a room that has to be in that particular place. And so, I mean, I'm inclined to say, or cubicles or walls. But then I don't know if that's, you know, that starts to, like, space planning of the space starts to get restrictive as well, but that's also what we're trying to do.
Through the chair. I'm thinking of FFNE, furniture, furnishings, fixtures and equipment. And I'm thinking of that because it's somewhat a common, you know, it's a reasonably understood concept, both for planners and perhaps developers and contractors. But I think it might, you know, it, that doesn't talk about interior walls.
Yeah.
For example, or, or something that's permanently built. It's kind of more about a TI level of work. So I was liking where Commissioner Nugent was headed. And sort of, I was concerned to Commissioner Patel's point, if it's, if we leave it too general, it might be hard to interpret. And so, liking the, where Commissioner Nugent was headed, so if we're going to go obstructed interior views, oh God, where'd you put the comma? Sorry.
Yeah.
Of activity.
Of activity, comma, including through the reflective or dark tinted glass. We could also put permanent structures and, or FFNE, yeah. I think that would be, that would satisfy my.
That would satisfy me.
So, through, through the chair. Since we're talking about a space that is at ground level, I think that some of the reflective material might be appropriate as a modesty screen up to a certain level. So, I've done that in the past, and it was beneficial because, for obvious reasons. And I don't know.
I'm disagreeing, because that's what we're trying to do, is to not have people putting, like, desks against the window, or, you know, like, to create their circulation along the windows. And, you know, maybe it's a little bit more circulation along the windows. I, I don't know, I mean, it's hard to be, again, I don't want to be too restrictive, but.
Well, the way I look at it, if I'm a landlord, then you're taking square footage out of my rentable space. So.
Through the chair, it's, it's still rentable.
Yeah.
Through the chair, if I could recommend two things. One, is obviously we need the applicant's input to make sure that they would be amenable. And second, because it's sort of discretionary, what staff has done with conditions of approval is end the condition with, subject to the review or approval of the zoning administrator or their designee, that we were left with some flexibility in not locking the condition or applicant into these examples of objects that would limit visibility.
That makes sense.
I, I would think that would be reasonable, because there are going to be situations where you need to, yeah.
So through the chair, if I could read back what I think I heard?
Sure, go right there.
Okay, and then we could, if we could have the applicant also. So, visibility into the ground floor of Building L shall be maintained in accordance with the El Camino master plan. Building occupants shall not cause obstructed interior views of activity, including through reflective or dark tinted glass or fixtures, furnishings or equipment, subject to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator or their designee.
The erection of permanent structures.
I think that's, that's the area where I was, I think, what the chair was saying is you probably want to leave them the ability to do some interior space planning. I wouldn't expect they'd put up a continuous, you know, solid wall right off of the glass. Anyway, trying to think that through. But wanted, wanted to try not to be overly prescriptive about what we were doing. So I was thinking about striking a balance with this, and I'm, I think we're hitting the glass, we're hitting the, what they do immediately on the other side of the glass. We're giving some, some discretion to the zoning administrator. So, to me, I'm, I feel like.
I agree with Commissioner Wiggins.
Yeah.
Because sometimes you want to do partition walls, right? And then you need, sometimes you just have to abut the glazing and.
Exactly. Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Wiggins, too, because what comes to mind is a project that was like, you know, it wasn't one medical, but it was like a small healthcare, you know, it was just this sort of thing. And so there were, you know, some partitions that had to meet either a mullion or, in a couple cases, glazing. So, you know, that had to be allowed, because that's sort of part of space planning, so. Okay, so I think we all were in agreement with what you said, and I think we should hear from the applicant, like you said. Is that right? So we wanted, so what the staff, Rendell, is suggesting is, you know, this amendment to the condition of approval. And it sounds like we want to, we want to hear if you have any comments on that before we. And you, you may have to read it again, Rendell.
One, one might hear clearly what the suggestion is.
Yeah, so, condition of approval number eleven. Are you going to reread it for us? Okay.
Through the chair, I'll pull it up on the screen.
Okay, great.
Do we want after the word "activity," comma, "including," so that it's not an exhaustive list? Yes.
So, you know, I, I think the language is problematic, frankly. I'm in, I'm in favor of the spirit of not obstructing views into the space. I don't like tinted glass. I, I'm, but also a tenant needs flexibility with how they lay out their space. And then, I don't, and so there's an interpretation here that I guess we're relying on. And the words, I, I don't know what to, I guess I have to ask Jen, what do you think of those words? Because, you know, if a tenant wants to have partitions or something that are set back into the space, that could be interpreted as somehow blocking the view, you know, as I read that. And, you know, whereas if you're just talking about vision glass and being able to see what's beyond the vision glass, I have no problem with that idea. But, you know, when you start talking about the furnishings that are inside the space that are behind vision glass, that starts to be intrusive in a way that I think probably you don't want to do.
I think our intent was to talk about what happens, like, at the glass. You know, in other words, if you've got clear glass that was intended for a retail space, and then a tenant comes in and puts, you know, cubicles, I don't know if people are doing that so much anymore, but, you know, cubicles against the glass.
I hear you, except.
And maybe we should define.
Just don't quite say that.
Through the chair, would, would the commission want to consider maybe a distance, like, from the glass, like, have like a three-foot or five-foot distance from the glass so that it's clear that there's no obstruction in that area versus, like, so that it's clear that we're talking about the area immediately adjacent to the glass?
Through, through the chair, thank you, staff, for that. I, that helps clarify my thinking, because I definitely do not want to try to pick a number of feet, because it throws into, into play a number of designs. And we, we run down the rabbit hole of speculation. I'd be, hearing the applicant, I'd be inclined to consider making it clear that we're limiting this to what happens immediately at the window. And so maybe fixtures, furnishings and equipment really isn't such a helpful set of words. And instead, what if we said window coverings, window treatments? Is that any better? If it's clear that it's only about what kind of attaches to the window? That's where I was originally coming from.
Window coverings and window treatments, I think, is perfectly fine.
Through the chair, I think what we're trying to avoid, this has come up on some of our properties downtown, right? Where we have ground floor and even above-ground floor office use, where we've had neighbors in the community come in and express concerns about exactly what you've described, desks being pushed up against the windows, or even large monitors being mounted against the windows so that they face inwards, but then the view from the street is just a series of backside monitors. There was even one person I remember who came in and complained and said the office workers are stacking boxes against the windows, and it looks really, it looks like trash, like they're, they're storing their trash against the windows. So I, I think that's, that's what we're trying to avoid, how we articulate that in the language. I'm not entirely sure.
So, just reading through this over and over and over again, and trying to think about where we strike the, the balance, and I almost, I, I'm starting to think that we can never be, get the right prescriptiveness unless we were to start outlining in multiple pages of, of documentation what it is exactly what we're trying to achieve here. And it may be easier if we just go, you know, building occupants shall not cause obstructed views, obstructed interior views of activity, subject to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator or the designee. I think having that, because I think the understanding there is we need to, we need to be able to trust our staff to, to understand what our intent is. And if we get too prescriptive, it could cause issues in the future where something that we don't intend occurs.
Yeah, I, I think this was a good conversation. We've gone full circle.
If it helps, I can tell you that we are very sensitive to how a tenant presents themselves to such a public setting as the North Block. We'll probably be harder on the tenant than the city will be.
Okay, so with that note, I think we go back to a less. Okay, so with that note, I think we go back to a less, a more open statement. So are we, are you suggesting we delete reflective or dark tinted glass?
Right. I would delete everything that begins with through.
Yeah.
And just go activity.
Activity, period. Or not period, subject to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll wait for the final version.
And through the chair, would we pull that back up just for the applicant? Just for verification?
Yeah, so now we have that last line is building occupants shall not cause obstructed interior views of activities, subject to the satisfaction of the zoning administration, administrator, or their designee.
Yes.
Okay. All right, great. I think we're all in agreement now that we've hashed that out. Okay, so at this point, we can request a motion and would anyone like to request a motion? I mean, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve the site plan and architectural review modification, including the change to condition 11 that we've put on screen.
I'll second that.
Great. Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Williams.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ebner.
Nope.
Commissioner Nugent.
Yes.
Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That was four to one, and the resolution passes.
If I could, if I could just add an announcement that this action of the planning commission is also appealable to the city council within 10 calendar days. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we can close that item. Thank you. Okay, we can go on to item number three now. And Mary, will you read that item, please?
Item number three, housing element 2023 to 2031 schedule.
All right. Thank you. So at this time, we will start with a staff presentation, and then there's clarifying questions from, from the planning commissioners. And then if there are any public comments, we'll take those, and then we will have commissioner deliberation. This item is a study session, so there will be no action taken on this proposal this evening. So Mener, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chair Williams. So the item before you tonight is a discussion about the housing element schedule, and this was at the request of the commission from the last meeting. Just in case any members of the public are interested, the housing element is a required chapter of the city's general plan. Every city, every jurisdiction in California is required to have one, and it requires certification from the state. The housing element typically runs for an eight-year cycle and has programs and policies that are intended to plan for housing and growth in a community. With that background, I wanted to note that the city's housing element for the 2023 to 2031 cycle was adopted by the city council in January, and that version of the document was submitted to the state. The state housing and community development department provided comments on that version, which was presented to the city council on April 17th through a study session. And staff is also going to be doing another study session before city council on June 5th. The item before you tonight is to look at the schedule for the next, next phase of this project as we continue to work collaboratively with the state to make amendments to the housing element to reach a point where the state is comfortable with certifying the city's housing element. So to that effect, the attachment in your packet outlines the schedule for the housing element. We anticipate that after the study session before council in June, we will be working again through an iterative process and through discussions with the state housing and community development or HCD department. And once we receive some understanding from the state that they are comfortable with the changes that have been made, the programs and policies that the city is proposing, then we would bring it back somewhere in the October, November, and December timeframe to the planning commission for a recommendation to council and then a re-adoption by council. Of course, this is just a tentative schedule, you know, the, it really depends on what kind of comments and what kind of discussions we have with the state moving forward. If the state has another round of comments, then we may have to submit it a fourth time. But currently, this is our best guess at what the schedule will entail. So with that, I'll turn it over back to the, back to the chair.
All right. Thank you for that. Are there any clarifying questions on this before we provide comments?
Through the, excuse me, through the chair, a couple for staff, kind of, kind of for me, really maybe more for anyone that's listening. Where we've been to date, could you just run through it really quickly, sort of like the, when did the housing element process start? And then I know there was a couple, I think a couple submissions to the state last year. Just give like 30 seconds on that.
Yes, absolutely. So this has been a multi-year process to get to the adoption that happened in January. I believe it started in 2020, if I'm not mistaken, and had, went through an extensive public outreach component as well. That is required, of course, for housing element adoption. We had submitted the first draft of the housing element to the state sometime in 2022, so last year, I believe it was in June, if I'm not mistaken. We received comments from the state in September last year. We revised the housing element based on the comments that were provided, published it for seven days, and then the council adopted it in January of this year. Once the council adopted the housing element, we submitted that version to the state in January of this year and received comments from them in March.
Thank you. And just building on that, because I think I missed the meeting, it came, it came before planning commission in January of this.
That is correct. And it has, there have been study sessions in the past year as well before the planning commission on the housing element in 2022.
Thank you. A couple more through the chair. The, the June 5th study session, that's just council. Do you know why there's not, why it's not, say, a joint study session with the planning commission? I'm just trying to call, that may have been at council's direction, but do you know why there's not a sort of, sometimes things come to planning commission first and then city council. Do you know why that's not on this schedule?
So typically, things come to the planning commission when they're further along, when council has given the broad level of policy direction. And so the study session on, in June is intended to be that broad policy direction from council. Planning commission study sessions are focused more when the projects are further along and further developed.
Thank you. And then following up on that, then if I scroll down, we've got a, a public hearing before the planning commission targeting Q4, October, November, December. That's, is that correct? That's when the thought is, it would be further along for planning commission to review?
That is correct.
Okay. And my last question. You had mentioned in the schedule, if, if you had to go back to HCD again for a fourth submittal, would that occur? Let's see, you've got August 2023, submit revised housing element for HCD, HCD review 60 days. If there was a resubmittal, would it happen sort of after that and before it comes back to planning commission?
Well, it really would depend.
Sorry, speculative, yeah.
The third and fourth round of reviews are really contingent upon, you know, the iterative process that we are expecting with HCD. So it's hard to, hard to plan that far ahead and know exactly when there would be opportunity to, to receive input from the planning commission. However, I will say this, that, you know, before the council can adopt or re-adopt the housing element, it is mandated by law that it has to come to the planning commission.
Thank you. Those are all my clarifying questions.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Nugent.
Oh, yes. Thank you for providing this. Can I actually peek on you because my laptop's not working? So the question I had, sorry, get closer to my mic. So the question I had was between the, the June and August timeframe. So in July 2023, you have published revised housing element for public review and comment. And then in August 2023, submit revised housing element for, to HCD for third review. So my question is, between the publishing of the revised housing element and the submission to HCD, is there any action by the public or public review, either through the planning commission or the city council, that occurs between the publishing of the revised housing element and the resubmission in August? Because I, my, I guess, is there, is, keep it to a question.
Yes, my understanding is that we can, in, before a housing element is adopted, we can submit various iterations to the, to HCD to consider. And I don't know, Masreen, if you have anything to add to that. But we anticipate this to be more of a working draft where we can share with HCD the changes that we are proposing and get their informal input. I have heard from other cities that have received certification, that they have had opportunity to do that with HCD. So we are hoping that we can also avail ourselves of that process. It is not, it is somewhat akin to our, our planning process when we have applicants who submit something to us, then we try to work with them and, you know, have them share what they, how they plan to respond before they formally resubmit something.
And so in, in that process, in that, in that kind of iterative draft submission process, what would be the place for public review and comments then during the, that published period? Would it be going to the city then? Like what becomes of those comments? Like, is that, I'm just curious. I just want to know if they go into the ether or?
Yes. So we have, we are required to publish any changes to the housing element for a minimum of seven days for public input before we can provide it to HCD. So, so that would be our opportunity. We would, we typically do noticing, we do social media posts, we email the interested parties list and do those kind of notifications when we publish something for, for that time period.
I just want to clarify that there's no requirement for a public hearing after that period. If that's what you're.
Okay.
Essentially.
Okay. And so when are the requirements for the public hearing? Is it just before the adoptive process?
Go ahead. That's my understanding. Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Through the chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, go right.
Sorry. The previous two times that the housing element has been submitted to HCD, it did come first to planning commission and then to council prior to that submission. But it seems like now the process being proposed is different, that it wouldn't come back to planning commission, if I'm reading this correctly, and this was, this was the prompt for the question last time, until after certification.
No, through the chair, if I could clarify, so the certification is the last step in the process. So that's expected after December of 2023. Because what we are doing in the interim is coordinating with HCD to resolve the comments that were recently provided and getting a, perhaps a conditional certification where they are on board with the changes that are being proposed. And then coming back to planning commission and city council for re-adoption, and then submitting it for certification. So, so the certification would be the last step in the process after December 2023.
Great. Let me, let me ask a different question then. If we achieve conditional certification from HCD, and then it comes to planning commission, what type of feedback is helpful from planning commission at that point? Because I would assume if we've achieved conditional certification from HCD, I guess I'm wondering why we change anything at that point if it seems like HCD has said, you know, this is pretty good, you know, with maybe one or two final i's that need to be dotted and t's that need to be crossed. How, how can we as planning commission help at that point?
Absolutely. I think the planning commission has the discretion to provide feedback at that point as well, even though HCD may have, you know, provided conditional certification. So that would be our opportunity to comment. And of course, you know, there will be those seven day public comment period as well when it is published. I know that wouldn't be as a commission to, there wouldn't be an opportunity to deliberate on it as a commission at that point. But I think that's what the meeting tonight is for, that if you would like to recommend alternatives to the council for their consideration, that's something that you can provide input to staff, and we would include that at our June 5th meeting.
I see.
Through the chair.
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you very much for putting this schedule together for us to review tonight.
Thank you for asking for it.
Sure. So my initial reaction has already been brought up by the group in that prior to, the prior to submittals, we had comments on before it went to council. And I, and I think what you said was that you really want us to comment further on when it's, it's, further along on the process. But we commented from day one, when it just started. So I don't understand why the change would occur now, saying the document needs to be more refined when we've been working on the document when there was essentially nothing there. So what has changed between our prior meetings and this incident?
Well, we have a second comment review letter from HCD. So previously, our goal was to have a housing element adopted and certified by January 2023.
Yeah.
Since we have a comment letter from HCD, it does put us in a time bind to get the process expedited. And we want to work directly with HCD to resolve the comments that they have, and then bring it back to the planning commission and to council.
Okay. So as far as I remember, last time it went to the council, well, in December of last year, I believe it came to the council, and then they couldn't really make any changes because we were under the gun then to meet the seven day minimum requirement for our submittal. So council was handcuffed where they weren't really able to make substantive changes or any changes at all, because it wouldn't have given it enough time to be submitted to HCD. Is that a correct assumption? Do you remember that?
That is tied to the, the state requirement.
Correct.
Commissioner Ebner, that required submittal adoption and submittal to, to HCD by January 31st of 2023. However, like we had the study session before council on April 17th, and we have another study session coming up on June 5th before the council. So my understanding is that they, they do have opportunity to comment and.
Okay. So, and this is where some of my confusion comes with this document, and it has to do with the October, November, December 2023. And it mentions, you know, we would then have an opportunity to look at it only if it's conditionally certified. And to Seema's point, if it's conditionally certified, when you bring it to us, why would we want to make changes?
The conditional certification process, to my understanding, is that HCD does impose conditions on certification. They still want to see additional aspects to the housing element, and therefore the planning commission does have opportunity to weigh in at that point.
I see. Okay, that makes some sense. So I guess my only question would be, and you had, you had mentioned this earlier, is that would anybody on this commission want to make any suggestions to council to change this schedule?
Through the chair, should we do a public comment before we discuss any changes we might want to suggest?
Yeah, that's a good idea. If there's not other questions. I do have one question, though. And it may be, maybe something everyone knows already. But I guess I, I haven't read, how are the comments that are, the comments from HCD, how are they available to us if we were to want to see those?
The comments are available on the housing element website.
Okay.
And they were attached to the city council agenda report as well, from April 17th.
I need to go look at those because I haven't looked at those. All right, that was my question. So at this time, then, maybe we should go ahead and open it to a public comment. So at this time then, maybe we should go ahead and open it to a public comment. So we have one person that is here. Are there any online comment, public speakers?
There are no online public speakers. And Thomas, you can go ahead and step to the podium.
Hi, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, San Mateo resident. The opinion, I am on a committee, but the opinions are my own as a private resident. I'm really hoping in this submission that it felt like in the January meeting that there was a lot of distance between where the Planning Commission was and the City Council was. And I'm hoping that we can really just get closer together and, and maybe not make it so public and not have it saying one body's disapproving it, one's approving it, because it just doesn't look good. And, you know, really, hopefully, those who have concerns will just take it up with City Council and staff and, and in the way that any other resident would and get this housing element approved so that we don't put funding at jeopardy. Because, you know, somebody who really is in need of housing really doesn't care what any of us think about how this policy should be set. They're just looking for some housing. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. All right. If there are no other public speakers?
No other public speakers.
Okay. So we can close the public comment period and open it up for Commissioner deliberation. Would anyone like to start?
Through the chair, could I just remind the commission that there's no formal action being taken? But whatever the results of your deliberation would essentially be forwarded as an advisory opinion to the City Council, just to set the tone for that.
And to add to that, the commission would have the option to also provide comments if, you know, a member of the commissioner wants to provide comments at the June 5th City Council meeting as well.
Do you mean as an individual or as a commissioner? You mean as an individual?
Well, as an individual, but I also think as if the commission today decides that, you know, you would like to have a commissioner representative be present at the June 5th meeting and to speak on behalf of the commission. I think that would be perfectly fine as well. I'd want to check with city attorney though, Assistant City Attorney though.
This is, I mean, the agenda is just to receive information. So on the anticipated schedule. So I, I think we may want to encourage them to appear if they choose as individuals rather than a commission or a commission representative at the June 5th meeting.
Noted.
Sorry, through the chair, just clarifying on that. Yes, this, we're receiving information in a study session. So we're receiving, and just clarifying that we're receiving information. We're also doing some studying tonight. Is that fair? And if we come up, if we were to come up with some consensus comments, if those emerged out of our study regarding the schedule, are you saying those, that's what you're saying? It would sort of effectively be provided? It would end up on the public record? You're writing staff reports, they're going to go to council, it's going to get in there?
I, I think what I'm saying is the Planning Commission itself is not taking any formal action. However, staff is willing to forward the Planning Commission's comments to the City Council. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And then just to reiterate what you said, that we obviously have the opportunity to appear before City Council as individuals. But not, I, I mean, we don't, that, that's, that was what you were clarifying versus appearing as a planning commissioner. That this is our opportunity to provide comment to City Council.
Through, right. Through an informal action now. And as a planning commissioner, you retain First Amendment rights as a private citizen. But because the action, the agenda item is to receive information and not choose a delegate or choose a representative or to, to make any, you know, consensus comment to the City Council, I would advise against that and just encourage you all to remember to keep your individual and commission roles separate should you decide to attend the June 5th City Council meeting.
So through the chair, is there an option for agendizing a study session on the housing element for the Planning Commission?
Again, if it's a study session, what formal action would you want? Or are you asking for any formal action?
Well, what I, what I'm asking is, since this is a study session about scheduling for the housing element, does that, and we are able to comment on this schedule, does that allow, does this being an open item, agendized item, allow us to request for an agendized study session for the Planning Commission on the housing element?
Isn't, isn't that what we're going to now provide comment on? We are, like, this is our opportunity as each commissioner to provide comment on the schedule before us, which would in fact be, you know, if you want to request what you're asking for, you know, that would be our, that's our opportunity now.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at procedurally a different option than making a request to another legislative body. Are we capable of agendizing a meeting ourselves?
Through, through the chair, my understanding is that the schedule for the housing element is determined by City Council. And therefore, if you, as a commission, discuss this housing element schedule and come to a consensus or have comments, that staff can then communicate on June 5th to council. I think we'd be happy to do that. I think that would be the process for this, this item tonight.
So I think, I think what I'm hearing Commissioner Ebner is because the subject is the housing element and that is governed by a schedule that is approved by City Council. And then, no, we as a body cannot request that subject to be agendized. But we could request, we could pass a request through staff to City Council to say, hey, we have, we would like to request a study session be incorporated into this broader schedule.
Correct.
Is that?
That's the information that we have. And I, you know, I mean, if that's the way the process is, and that's the way the process is. To me, missing an opportunity to have input prior to the June 5th meeting is a detriment to the process. And I'm, I don't mean it personally. I care less personally. But I think input from the Planning Commission would have been appropriate at this time. And it's not being availed to us. So I don't know if there's other, other options that people want to look at?
Through the chair, I, I would say maybe providing some feedback in, in this earlier time period like we have in the past would be beneficial. But I do think at a minimum, I would like to ask City Council if we could have a study session after the public comment before the submission to HCD in August.
Actually, Commissioner Patel, I would actually change that to, to recommend a during the public comment period?
During the public comment period, okay.
Excuse me, are you talking about after the pub, or after the published revised housing element? During those seven days?
Well, it's, it's at least seven days. It can be more than seven days. Yeah.
So, so just to clarify, so we're talking about the July published, published revised housing element for public review comment, minimum of seven days. So before the August date, but in July?
Yes.
Through the chair. I think, I mean, I think it's, it's somewhat unimportant at that point because we are an advisory committee to the council. And the council will already have directed staff on what to do in June and July. So our input at that point, I don't think will be, would be beneficial.
Well, I, I think one thing to keep in mind is the iterative view and communication with HCD staff is an effort to, you know, meet the schedule and, you know, work directly with HCD and, you know, planning and, you know, the city to, you know, work through the remarks, work through the comments and get some resolution on them. So, I mean, that period is like an important working period. And I feel like in some ways, we should let that play out and see what they can, you know, what progress they can make with HCD on that. I don't know what the opportunity there is before that.
Through the chair. Thanks for putting the schedule out. It's, it's helping us have, I think, a really, really good conversation. And I'm listening and trying to think it all through. And it's, to me, it's kind of agreeing with what Commissioner Ebner just said. Sort of if we are an advisory for this particular issue of a housing element, if Planning Commission's role is advisory to City Council, which I think is right. Yeah. It, it does seem like something before June 5th would have been the most logical place, the most ideal place. And so do you, do you know why? Is that because council just wanted to do it differently? Or I apologize for not sort of paying enough attention to already know that answer, but.
Through the chair, I, I do not have a response to that question. I did not prepare the schedule. My understanding is that the schedule was presented or some form of the schedule was presented to the council on April 17th after the second review letter was received. And we did tell the council at the time that we would be coming back with the second study session before council. And there was no input provided that this needed to come before Planning Commission at that time.
Through the chair, if I could weigh in, this is Christina Horstberger, the CDD Director. And so I would just add that I think Manera hit the nail on the head when she spoke earlier in saying that this is a really fast moving schedule. And in order to present to you, we have to have enough information to present. And so we have the comment letter back and we're presenting information as it becomes available. And we are trying to get our housing element moving as quickly as possible. And we're getting information in front of the council as quickly as possible. And they have conveyed to us that they want to see this move as fast as we can make it go. And that they want us to get information in front of, in front of them as quickly as we can get it in front of them. Because they want to see our housing element get certified so that we don't become at risk of losing funding sources that are available to, to the city. And so that we don't become at risk of putting ourselves at risk of builders remedy projects and at risk of potential penalties from the state. And so we don't have, like, like, we're working all the way up until the Fridays before the City Council meetings to get the information available for the City Council meeting. And so before June 5th, we don't know that we wouldn't necessarily have something to present to you before that time. And so I would say that this is a really fast moving schedule. And when we presented to City Council the last time we presented the schedule and we were asked to move as expediently as possible. And so that's sort of the marching orders that were going on right now. They were considering, as I think we mentioned to you the last time when, when this item came up. They did bring up the, the notion of a joint study session and they opted against that. And so they did, they did talk about some of these different options and they opted for expediency. And so that's what we're trying to work with. And we're changing the schedule all the time to get whatever information we have in front of them as quickly as possible. And so if you have a recommendation for something that you would like us to ask them to insert, I think we would be happy to ask them about that on June 5th. But right now, as it stands, our agenda report is in the process of, of being reviewed for publication right now for that June 5th meeting. Because that's what our agenda timeline is for City Council. And so we're already at that publishing threshold for that upcoming meeting. So that's sort of our lead time for those council meetings. It's two weeks ahead of time. So we're there with that meeting already. And so if there's a time that you're looking for to insert somewhere in the in-between time, it wouldn't be before June 5th. It would have to be sometime after that. And if you have a date after that that you would like to make a request for, then we can make that request for you. And that could be, you know, something that we insert in the schedule and we can make that ask. As Mazreen and Manera mentioned, you also are more than welcome to during public comment, make public comments at that City Council meeting. You can also send emails to the City Council if you wish to do that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we're, there's no further opportunity now before June 5th. This is our last May meeting. So that's, you know, that window is closed. But is there any opportunity to move the June 5th date? I mean, I'm just curious as how much flexibility there is.
No, I don't think so. Not if we're going to move as quickly as possible based on the direction we have from City Council. Our, our direction is to move forward towards sort of certification as quickly as possible. We're not going to see City Council again between now and June 5th. And we've been directed to move this forward. And so to take this off the schedule would be to not follow the direction, in my mind anyway, that we've received, which is to move it forward. And so I don't think there is an opportunity to delay it.
Thank you, Christina. Then, then your comments are very helpful. I just want to relay my, my primary concern. And this has more to do with the City Council's, basically the, the time that they have to provide input on this at a single study session. It just seems to me that the depth of content within this, the housing element and the, the extensiveness of the, of the HCD comments are fairly vast. And that I, I personally worry that a single study session by the City Council could only kind of scratch the surface to, 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 you know, provide comments and feedback to staff as far as what directions to take to address, to address the, the comments. And, and so my concern is that, that we're not providing the City Council. And, you know, maybe staff can do it. But the way I see it is, is there's just so much content to go through with the housing element and so many interconnected pieces to the comments, to, to things that would potentially have to change. I, I just worry that, that City Council will just not have enough time to cover most of the housing element and provide staff with, with usable direction in this truncated timeline with, with the City Council session. I don't know where that goes because this is the, these are the decisions that were, that were made. But me personally, my concern is that there just is so much to go through, to comb through with the housing element and to get it to achieve the, the needs of HCD. And, you know, I personally feel a little powerless to help City Council. And I, and I feel like the intent is there on all parties, staff, council, everybody wants to get this right. And it's just, it seems to me that this is very, very fast and that I worry that staff is not going to be able to capture or have enough direction in one study session by City Council.
I, I think that they could, if they didn't feel like they were able to get through it, they could ask us to return. And so I totally understand what you're saying. And I don't think that the schedule is set in stone. I think the key. I think the key is, is that it's at the council's discretion to make adjustments to the schedule.
If I may echo a little bit of what you said, I think what concerns me, there was a public comment that we received that noted, you know, we've had four of our council members turn over in November and some of us on this dais have been working on this housing element since November 2020. And I know me personally, I've put hundreds of hours into this housing element. I have read the drafts multiple times. I feel like I know the material really well and I would say that for the rest of my commissioners on this dais, right? We've, we've put a lot of time into this. How can we make that knowledge most useful and most helpful, particularly to our new council members, is what I'm trying to reconcile with the need to move as quickly as possible to, to obtain that certification as quickly as possible. And so I, I hear that before June 5. I he, I also hear from Commissioner Ebner, our, our role is to be advisory to city council. So in an ideal world, we would have advice to give them before it goes to them, but I also hear that the staff is working right up until that June 5 deadline. So those are all the constraints in place and I'm trying to figure out how can we work within these constraints to make our experience and our knowledge most useful to council? So it seems like before June 5 is not really an option, but maybe after June 5 is, right? Maybe, maybe there is a study session that happens with city council and then there is, maybe it's, it's after the staff then updates the adopted housing element in response to that study session. Maybe then there is a study session with us and if council is feeling like, like they need a second go at it, they could then, the second go could be after it comes to us. So I, I think I'm thinking something like the June 5 city study councils, city council study session, then June, July, update the adopted housing element, then there's a study session with us, perhaps concurrently with the iterative review and communication with HCD staff. And then if the council chose to, they could, they could do a second study session in response to our study session or not.
So, um, so I mean, I'm literally looking at dates, so. So the, and I'm, and I really want to be cognizant of that, you know, that placeholder for staff to, you know, review and communicate with HCD staff, but you're suggesting that in, in June or July, there's an opportunity for us to provide comment, like, do you want to provide a date? Like, I mean, I just think we, our meetings are the 13th and the 27th in June, so, um, that, I mean, those are our June options. So do we want to, are you proposing one of those dates?
I hadn't thought about that, but, you know, if I, if, if we're looking at dates, then I would say maybe the June 27th.
Mm-hmm.
Because then it's been a few weeks since the city council study session, so staff has had a few weeks to incorporate the direction from the city council. Um, or maybe it's the first one in July, although I think we'd want to get ahead of the revision that goes to the public. So maybe the June 27th is the right date.
Mm-hmm. Through the chair, is June 27th already booked with?
Uh, no, I believe we do, do not have any items or may have one item at this point on the June 27th, planning commission date.
So, so Chris, so Christina, are you still on?
Yes.
Thank you. So there's a little less than two weeks until June the 5th. And you're working on the agenda, does that need to be published this week?
It will get published next week.
Next week. So I'm not trying to be difficult or complicate things. Is there any way for a rough draft of the housing element coming to a study session for the planning commission as a special meeting next week?
No.
Okay. All right. So back to June 27th. I don't, I'm not trying to, to muddy the water, but what will we be trying to gain on the 27th? To study this, to study it and to have our study session submitted to the council?
Through the chair. I mean, I think at that point, it would be, based on the schedule outlined here primarily for the benefit of staff, right? That, that we would be providing feedback for them, but if council came back after the June 5 study session and said, that was a lot of material, we couldn't get through all of it, and then wanted a second study session, we might be able to set up an opportunity that they could have their second study session after our study session.
Through the chair, can I, may I chime in to something that I feel is, is being lost here, is that the city council sets the schedule for the housing element and it's really, because planning commission is a subordinate body to the council and is an advisory, it's really for the council to ask planning commission, not the other way around, which I feel is like what's happening here. So I, I just want to put that out there for your consideration, that the council is, is, I believe is aware of, you know, the wealth of knowledge that you all have and the hard work that you've done so far. Um, but it, it just seems like we're, we're doing this in reverse and it should be for the council to call upon the planning commission to put something on a calendar versus the opposite. And I, I just want to put that out there for your consideration.
Okay. So I'm not sure where to go with that, with, you know, all of this.
That leaves us, as our comments on the schedule, to be submitted to the council for their review.
I think what I'm saying is we can ask if the council would like for you to
Yeah.
have a meeting, but not let them know you will be having a meeting maybe.
Yeah.
Fine difference there, but.
Yeah, I think that's the intent of the discussion. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think we were just trying to, to offer a suggestion of when that could happen, right? We were trying to come to the table with, would you like this to come before us? And if you do, here is what we think would perhaps be the time that might work the best given all the constraints in front of us.
Right. And I mean, because, you know, it's obviously, yeah, limited, there's limited options. I mean, you know, there's, it's not, it's not possible to do it before June 5 and, you know, and then if we wait too long, then we're not sure what use that is. So I think that was my effort to look at what is, what are the options? What's even feasible at this point? So, um, I agree, a suggestion is, you know, is, um, what we're, you know, what we're doing at this point, not that we're requiring it, we can do that, but, um, so I, I guess what we should do is kind of, you know, do we want to go through and provide any further comments now that we've kind of, okay, are there other, I just like kind of more formalized comments or?
I'm, I'm, I appreciate this whole conversations. Be a broken record, it's very helpful to understand the context that staff is working within and I just feel like it'd be a bit remiss if I didn't observe with this schedule and be a part of my, my, what I would, you know, offer as constructive advice to council that the housing element, it is just a foundational document for the city. And so when I look at the schedule, uh, I certainly hope the schedule balances, you know, being thorough and complete and not, um, not being incomplete in a way that would, you know, negatively impact the city of San Mateo. That just seems to, for something as important as, as the schedule of the housing element to be a balancing factor. That'd be my only other comment.
Do you have any comments, Commissioner Niedgen?
I'm just going to quickly reiterate, I think the, the main comment I have is that there's just a lot of content for the city council to sift through and provide feedback to staff. And so my goal is, is to give staff and the city council an opportunity to organize and think through those comments. And I want to provide the city council, or the, the planning commission as a body, um, an offer of help for that. And, and that's where my head is at, is I want to help the city council and staff sift through this process and achieve a passing housing element.
Through, through the chair. I, I don't remember exactly what the number was, but I think the last time it went to city council, it was like 1,600 pages. And, um, that's a huge package to go through and educate yourself, um, in, in a very short amount of time. And I do understand the urgency, obviously we all do. We've been working, I think, very diligently for a long time to try and get this right. Yet it reminds me of a statement that Sandy Council made the first time we met and she, we asked her, why did you pick the sites inventory prior to vetting them through 686? And her statement was, because the city council directed me to. And that has put us in partially untenable place with this, with this project. So I know we have to keep the urgency, yet we don't want to repeat our past digressions as time is becoming even more important to get it certified. So with that, are we going to ask for a formal note to the council or is this is just going to be a part of the January or June 5 discussion with council?
I, so maybe I, I'll summarize what I think might be coming out of this is that we offer to the city council our, what is it, June 27th, June?
June 27th, yes.
June 27th, planning commission meeting, um, is an opportunity to review basically where, where we're at with the, with the, with the, um, housing element at the planning commission, um, if they would like to have our help in devising our response, yes.
Yes, and through the chair of the commission as a whole thinks that the June 27 date would be the right opportunity for you to provide input, then we can certainly add that to our presentation to council on June 5 at that request.
Yeah, I think that is a consensus amongst us, so that'd be great.
Okay. We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
And you can let us know, obviously.
Yes, at the June 13th meeting.
We'll find out.
Hey, we'll find out, but yeah, it'd be good to get a decision on that, I guess, from them, hopefully. Okay, all right. Uh, I don't have any other comments to add other than I think that, that, that date is what I would like to hone in on, so. Because I sense the schedule is, uh, yeah, it's, it's going to be slipping away from us. All right, well, I think that closes this item. If there's no further comments and we can move on to, um, reports and announcements.
Yes, uh, I'm happy to start. So we have a training coming up, a workshop on May 31st. I believe several of the commissioners have signed up. I know I plan to be there, our director, Christina Horstberger, plans to be there as well, uh, so we'll have a good turnout from San Mateo to, to learn more about housing element laws, timely topic. Let's see, I think that was the biggest one. Our next meeting is going to be on June 13th. Uh, we currently have one item, which is the Palm Avenue Tennis Court. It, it had come before the commission through a study session, uh, so we're actively working towards scheduling that meeting. Uh, just to do a quick check, are all the commissioners present for that one? I think we have.
Through the chair, virtually present.
Yes.
And I'll talk to staff so I know exactly how that is posted and ensure the, the technical stuff is all going to work, so.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, Commissioner Wiggins.
Yes, I'm available.
Everybody's here in person.
So for the 13th, um, what is the item that's on the calendar?
Palm Avenue Tennis Courts.
Oh.
Or Tennis Court.
Court, just the one, singular.
I think I recalled that it was one.
And will there also be nominations for chair and vice chair at that meeting?
That's a good question, Commissioner Ebner. I'll check with our admin team and city clerk.
Okay.
And I think, yeah, there is a prescribed process for that, so, so I look at that.
I just want to make sure if it's, if it's supposed to happen, then it's, it gets agendized.
Uh, and that would be for the 13th, you said?
Yes, June 13th.
Okay, not at the next one, okay.
I'll send an email update on that if it's scheduled for that meeting.
And, um, I will be out on September 19th, if we can get that on the calendar.
If our admin team could please take note, so Commissioner Ebner will be out on September 19th.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, I'm sorry, September 12th. September 12th, second Tuesday in September.
Thank you. That's, that concludes staff's updates. Thank you.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, I can adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Oh, you're all ready, ready to be chair.